The executive session of the workshop has been completed and there's nothing to report out at this time. We are now in session for the city council, September 28, 2021. Let me say that Mrs. Clarkson is going to be leading us in prayer and the pledge. We usually have a flag that comes down for the pledge, but we'll be using this flag over here tonight. Would you please stand?
This is a simple prayer that I often look to when I need to be grounded and quiet and focused, if you'll join me. God grant us all the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, give us the courage to change the things that we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker, a request form to the city secretary in advance of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. When speakers are called, they are to come to the podium and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have been concluded. Thank everyone for making this a time of civility and good, solid decisions. Now, do we have announcements of community interest?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to everybody tonight. Did we have a great weekend in Kerrville?
Yes.
Lots of stuff this past weekend, pretty amazing. Great to see all the people in town. We're gonna, we don't have, the next two weeks don't have quite as much, but still have a lot of fun events going on. This Saturday, October 2nd, and then again next Saturday, October 9th, Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department's Movies in the Park series returns to Louise Hayes Park. This is part of our Halloween series. This week's feature is Casper. Next week's, we'll see the Addams Family. So we encourage everybody to come out. That starts at 7:30 PM or dark. I think they're pretty close to the same time, but a lot of fun. All right, let's see if I can get this to advance. There we go. Library activities. The library in conjunction with the Riverside Nature Center and the Native Plant Society is going to be hosting author Elizabeth McGreevy this Saturday, October 2nd at 2:00 PM. It's actually going to be in the Kerr Regional History Center. That's her book on the left. She'll be discussing wanted mountain cedars. And according to this, she'll be examining the important role of the often malign tree in the ecological landscape of the Hill Country. Now, I'm not going to be there because I'm actually allergic to the word cedar. So, but I encourage people to go out. I think that'll be pretty interesting. And on the right is To Kill a Mockingbird. This is banned books week at the library. They have a list of books that have been banned in the past or that some people want banned now, and unfortunately, To Kill a Mockingbird is one of them. So we encourage people to go to the library, check out that list, and check out some of those books. Greg Reed's The Adventures of Huckleberry Henn, Finn the Catcher in the Rye, and To Kill a Mockingbird, all on that list of either banned or some people want banned. So be sure and speak out against that. All right, and just another reminder, like I said, we had a busy weekend this past weekend, but we've got another one coming up, October 16th. The Kerrville River Festival returns to Louise Hayes Park. Full day of activities capped with showings by musicians Austin Mead and Jared Neiman, and then we'll follow that with fireworks. So we encourage everyone to come out that weekend, mark it on your calendars. I think the Kerrville Chalk Festival will also be going on that weekend. So a lot to look forward to. Thank you.
Good. We may have other council members that have items of interest, but I want to congratulate Mr. Cunius that you've just heard. Congratulations to Stuart Cunius, who was inducted into the Tybee Athletic Hall of Fame last week after spending more than 20 years covering and photographing Tybee High School sports. In 12 years at the Hill Country Community Journal, Stuart's sports sections captured first place honors eight times in the Texas Press Association's Better Newspaper Contest and placed third on three other occasions. And his sports photos grabbed top honors six times with two more third place finishes. He also won first place awards in sports reporting at both the Old Mountain Sun and the Kerrville Daily Times. In 2016, he was named the Texas High School Coaches Association Putt Powell Sport Writer of the Year after being nominated for the honor by former Tybee Athletic and football coach Mark Smith. Would you give some applause to Mr. Cunius? He is Public Information Officer for the city and does a great job. Any other?
Yes, sir, please. Want to let everyone know again, next Saturday, October 9th, 5 to 7 is the opening, the grand opening of the Doyle Community Center. And we, the staff moved in last Thursday, and the building's just marvelous. So please, come out, join us, have some refreshments, some music, opportunity to dance. The street out in front of the center is going to be closed, and so should be a fun, fun time. And then I'd also like to mention again, the airport and the Race Wars Number Two, and that will be on October 23rd. And if anybody would like to help park cars in the morning for that, we'll be glad to take your name.
They need volunteers, a lot of them.
They need volunteers.
All right. Do you know, you've mentioned the drag races several times. I went last year, going this year too. I drive a 2010 Toyota Tacoma pickup. Is there a category for that?
We'll have to check into that, Mary.
Okay, all right, okay. All right. Okay, now we have a couple of presentations. And first, the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition. If you will please come up. This is a recovery coalition community set up a number of years ago to help find ways that the city can work with and address the issue of those in recovery in our community. And they have done an excellent job. And now, tell the folks, name and your position on the committee.
Okay, my name is, good evening, my name is Sabina Kunsal, and I am co-chair of the KRCC.
Good. My voice is not great, but I'm going to read this. Whereas through Recovery Month, we work to promote and support evidence-based treatment and recovery practices. The emergence of a strong and proud recovery community and the dedication of service providers and citizens across our community who make recovery in all its forms possible. And whereas prevention of mental and substance abuse disorders works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover in our area and all around the nation. And whereas, we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance abuse disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support. And whereas the 2021 National Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community, reminds people in recovery and those who support them that no one is alone in the journey through recovery. Everyone's journey is different, but we're all in this together. Recovery Month will continue to educate others about substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders, the effectiveness of treatment and recovery services, and that recovery is possible. All of us, from celebrities and sports figures to our coworkers, neighbors, friends, and family members throughout our lives, have experienced peaks and valleys, both big and small, but with strength, support, and hope from the people we love, we are resilient. And whereas, Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition invites all residents of Kerrville, Texas to participate in the National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 21 as Recovery Month in Kerrville, Texas, and call upon the people of Kerrville to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and ceremonies to report, or, sorry, to support recovery. Thank you for all that you do. If you'll hold that up, we'll get a picture or two. Thank you. Who is here to represent Dark Sky Month? Okay, would you please come up? I want y'all to stand out here. All right, good. We have done this recognition before, but this proclamation is very important in terms of the whole issue of dark skies. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of star-filled skies are the heritage of all humankind and locally to the inhabitants of Kerrville and inhabitants of Kerrville, and are therefore worthy of celebration. And whereas the experience of standing beneath a star-filled night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe, and may encourage interest in science and nature, especially among young people. And whereas the opportunity to view star-filled skies attracts tourists to our region and therefore economic benefits of Kerrville, preserving the rich heritage and starry night skies of Kerrville is important to its citizens. And whereas light pollution, which is wasted energy that performs no function or task, an artificial light that goes where it is not supposed to go, creates glare, light trespass, sky glow, and overlighting. Solving the problem of light pollution involves making better use of outdoor lighting to direct light down to where it is needed instead of upward into the sky, putting outdoor lights on timers and using outdoor lighting only where necessary. And whereas, the historical view of the night skies has been eroding in many areas, and generations are growing up with limited, if any, view of the wonders of the universe. And whereas this regional effort and the preservation and celebration of our night skies is worthy of a month-long celebration. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim Hill Country Night Sky Month. And I would like for you, if you would, just give us your names.
I'm Bruce Barton.
Debbie Thompson.
Bill Rector.
And I'm Greg Martin.
All right. I'll give this to you, and we'll get some pictures made. Let's, uh, let's see, let's look right down here, come the other side. All right, good, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Rector, did you want to speak?
At this time, we come to our visitor citizens forum. This agenda is provided to allow citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. Ms. McElhanan, if anyone has signed up to speak, do we have some?
Yes, sir, Robin Monroe.
All right. Note that no discussion may take place, no action may be taken. Since items are not posted, the council will not be discussing items, but may later refer questions to staff or in some measure follow. Speakers have four minutes. Come to the podium, please, give your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Robin Monroe. The address is 32 Chaparral Drive. And I'm just here this evening, like I said, I would be to just ask the council when they're going to put the public safety building on the agenda. So it was an urgent thing that we needed to address, and now it seems to be dead in the water again. So maybe there's more going on, but if you could give the newspaper permission to print what's going on, that would be informative, or post it somewhere would be great. So Mayor Blackburn, I'm just asking you to, you know, exhibit leadership and see what we can do about our public servants. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Keynes.
Nikki Keynes, 1809 Mountain Laurel. Like Ms. Monroe, I noticed that the public safety facility was not on the agenda, and we all agree that we want and need to understand how you're going to move forward on it. For myself and the people, I'm asking what plan of action you're taking and how soon we can hear about that. That would probably include whether the 2019 feasibility study can be used or will another one have to be done and paid for, if you're procuring any kind of funding, taking bids, looking for sites, et cetera. With a future voting date of May 7th, that means that the city council has a filing date of February 18th to ensure that it gets on that ballot. I want to encourage the city council to keep voters informed and include us on any movement for the public safety facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Stricki.
Well, on a lighter note, Bruce Stricki from 615 Earl Garrett Street. I just wanted to come down here this evening to remind everybody what a wonderful place Kerrville is. We had a fabulous weekend with the triathlon again, and I had an opportunity to speak to some staff, and we have spoken to staff in the past years as well. And I can promise you that Kerrville is the favorite place for them to put on that triathlon. They do triathlons all over the state, some other states in the country, and Kerrville's the place that they want to come. Staff loves to do that triathlon here. And if we look at the participation down at the parks and across the city, and how full our hotels and short-term rentals were, it was, it was a huge success. Restaurants were doing really well. We also had the Museum of Western Art and their program this weekend, and unfortunately, traffic was a little challenging over there on Bandera Highway. But it was fabulous to see the joy and the happiness and the excitement of people. And yeah, there was a little frustration, but we all got through it. It was a wonderful, beautiful weekend in Kerrville, which is why we live here. And you all, and the councils that, whose shoulders you stand upon, are why that is true. And I don't want you to lose sight of that. There are so many things and so many issues that we deal with, and it's never perfect. And nobody is ever all happy and everybody happy all the time. You all do a great job of doing the best thing for this city, as have councils before, and it just, it shows every weekend. This weekend is, the transition is coming along. We had Paragon Falcons in Osprey at Flat Rock Lake. We, it was just, I mean, I could just go on and on and on, and I could go another two minutes, but I know it's not what you all want to hear. I just want to remind you that this is a great place to live, and that, my goodness, I think I'm catching what you have, Mayor. This is a great place to live, and it's because of our staff and our council and all the things that you do in the best interest of the citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bethany Puccio.
Hi, I'm Bethany Puccio, and my home residence where I live is 418 Crestridge Drive, right here in Kerrville. So this is something that I've actually been hoping to come back around to since July, about mid-July, and with the petition, I just, with four minutes, I didn't have time, but I think it's worth circling back to. And the June 22 meeting, Councilwoman Garcia made a motion, and it was a two, it was one motion, but it had two parts. It was to not move forward with the CO, but to go ahead and put the public safety complex onto a ballot. And for whatever reason, in the minutes at the next meeting, July 13th, only half of his motion had been recorded, and he made a request that that be amended so that it was recorded accurately. And I sat in the audience, and I was just absolutely dumbfounded that all four of you turned him down, turned that motion down, and you went ahead and passed minutes that were incomplete. Now, where I work, paperwork is really, really important. I get fired on the spot for any kind of falsified data. Like if I sign paperwork and it's not complete or it's not accurate, I can get fired for that. So to me, this is a really big deal, that these documents, the Minnesota meeting, they're admissible in a court of law, they're legal documents, and I don't, I, I, it's beyond me what benefit there would be to go ahead and record it incomplete. And, you know, as a child, I was taught a half-truth isn't the truth, you know? And when we're under oath, we say, I swear to sell the truth and the whole truth. So I'm not sure why we would record half of a motion, and I feel that it's in all fairness, because this did become a big issue, very publicized in the papers, and it was a big thing in the city of Kerrville, that it's fair that Mr. Garcia's motion is recorded accurately in a public record. And I don't know, it's probably up to the city attorney to tell us, is there a way to go back and fix that now? Perhaps there isn't, but at least moving forward, maybe to offer an apology to Councilwoman Garcia. And I think that the biggest fallout to this is really, it undermines public trust, because when we're sitting out there and we're just listening and we're following along and we're observing, and we see something like that where there's incorrect data recorded in a legal document that's admissible in a court of law, it doesn't boost confidence, it doesn't boost, it erodes confidence in public trust. And that's not helpful to us or you. Like, really, trust is really important from your side and our side, and it helps us work together for the city that we do love, Kerrville. So I don't know if there's any way, you know, and certainly, I just want to say, I don't think anybody in the world expects that there's never a mistake made. I mean, there's human error, and that's not the point, because all of us understand human error, but just if there is error, or if there is a mistake made, that there is ownership of it, and that there's, you take responsibility and then correct it or amend it however possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the speakers.
That concludes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Let's go to our consent agenda. These items are voted on together unless council or someone else pulls an item. Tonight, we have four. Would you read those in, Ms. McElhanan?
Resolution number 39-2021, a resolution approving the budget for Kerr Emergency 911 Network for fiscal year 2022, inter-local cooperation contract between Texas Health and Human Services Commission acting on behalf of the Kerrville State Hospital and the City of Kerrville for pre-employment and fitness for duty evaluations for police officers, minutes for the city council workshop held September 14th, 2021, and minutes for the city council meeting held September 14th, 2022. There are no citizens that wish to pull any items.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote on the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. All in favor, raise the right hand. Okay. Now, the ordinances, first reading, if you'd read 5A for us.
Ordinance number 2021-26, an ordinance in Mini Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Boards and Commissions, Section 2 Point, excuse me, 2-91 Senior Services Advisory Committee of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by decreasing the membership of this committee to nine members and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Ms. Mizer?
Yes, sir. We have a presentation that'll come up in just a moment, and I'll put a copy at each of your places. So a little bit of history about the Senior Services Advisory Committee. It was established by ordinance number 2018-32 to be an advisory body of 13 members. At the city council meeting on January 8th of 2019, the appointments to the Senior Services Advisory Committee were made, and the action taken was to appoint the first 13 names on the application list and to come back at the next meeting to amend the ordinance to include the other three applicants that applied. So I think the conversation there was that there were 16 people that applied, and originally it was 13 people that could be appointed, and the council did not want to turn anyone down, so they decided to go ahead and appoint the next three, the other three members. So ordinance number 201905 increased the membership from 13 members to 16 members, and that was on January 22nd with a second reading on February 12th. And then ordinance number 2020-02 was reduce the membership from 16 to 14 members, and that was due to the seven meetings that were scheduled from July 2019 to January 2020. We had to cancel three of those meetings due to a lack of quorum, so council decided to reduce the members to make the quorum less. And that's the history, and then we get to the current. During the pandemic, COVID, we had no meetings from April 2020 to February 2021. Meetings resumed in March of 2021, and coincidentally, of the seven scheduled meetings in 2021 that we've had so far, we've had to cancel two due to a lack of a quorum.
Okay.
For our membership, we've had three resignations in 2021, and we have five membership terms that expire on September 30th, 2021. Three of those have reapplied, which leaves a total of five vacancies. Staff and the Senior Services Advisory Committee recommend the membership be reduced from 14 members to nine members, and that would be the five vacancies that we have. We have a letter of support provided by the Senior Services Advisory Committee Chair, Waverly Jones, that y'all received in your packet. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Could you briefly tell us what the Senior Services Committee does?
Yes, last year, or for the, since the beginning, we've been working on a couple of things, and one was to become a member of the AARP, Age Friendly City, and we are a member of that now. That became effective in May of this year, and we can apply for grants because of that, and actually, the community can apply for grants because of that. In addition, now we are working on a couple of other projects. We're working on a resource guide that's going to have, it's going to be a big, big guide that's going to give information related to services available for seniors in the community, and it's going to be like a one-stop shop for that.
Okay, all right. You know, in our community, with 27% of the population, 65 and over, this is important.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, council, questions, comments?
I, I do, I'm looking at this because later this evening, we're going to be making appointments to this committee. If we were to decrease the number from 14 to nine, that, and this is where I was going to go and ask the interview team, if we were to decrease it from 14 to nine, it would restrict council from appointing two of the people that submitted applications. There are going to be eight vacancy, well, there are going to be five vacancies. We already have one resignation and then two that are vacant, not currently held. But then we also... But then we also received five applications. So the current number of people that we would have, we have six, is that right, that are not going to expire at the end?
We have five openings right now.
And six people who will follow over, and their term won't expire?
In 2022?
Six or seven?
Yeah, I think it's six or seven.
Is it six or seven? Two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, so it's six. If we were to do that, we would, it wouldn't allow us to appoint all of the people who submitted their application. I think it's important to look at more of not the number of members that are there, that does play a factor, but the individuals and their participation in meetings, because you can narrow it down to five members, but if three of them don't attend, that's still the same problem that we have here. So instead of looking at the number, I think, I would ask the interview team, Councilman Clarkson and Councilman Eichner, when these individuals are interviewed, were all of them willing to participate in the Senior Services Advisory Committee? And if so, maybe we could keep the number to, what, 11 or 12, and allow everybody who applied to be on it.
I mean, all of the, I had talked with all of them, and yes, they are all willing to serve. Another way to look at it is because of the recommendation that has come from both the chair of the committee and from Kim, is, and I too hate to say no, and I would want to publicly thank them, but if we decided to do this because it's just more manageable, then I think we definitely need to say to them, "Come back and see us as soon as, the next time around." And so I think, yes, I agree with you, Mr. Garcia. I think it's important that we acknowledge when they're ready, people are ready to serve. That's vitally important and very, very much appreciated, but I also think we need to look at the manageability of the committee. So, and yes, like I said, they were willing to serve at that time. Narrowing it down was not something that was, I visited with them about, because I was not aware of that at the time.
Okay. Besides meeting attendance, is there anything else that is hard for staff to manage?
No, we just need to make a quorum so that we can meet.
Okay.
And reducing the number makes the quorum less.
Right. This would make the quorum, what, five? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the recommendation of Mrs. Jones, the committee chair?
To reduce it to nine members.
To reduce it to nine?
Yes.
She's been on it for how long?
Oh, she's been on it since the beginning, I believe.
From the very beginning, yes.
I'm inclined to follow her recommendation.
All right. The, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2021-26.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, motion second, all in favor, other raised hands? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say, Mr. Garcia, that I agree with Ms. Eichner, that I hope they will come back the next time we're appointing members of that committee. Okay, 6A.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me just a moment, please. I had turned in a speaker's request form, and things went awfully fast. I didn't get a chance to object at the time. I did turn a speaker, turn in a speaker's request form to the young lady out front. My name is Raymond Tier.
For this item? For this agenda item?
Not for this agenda item, but for the general opportunity to speak.
For the visitors' citizens forum?
Ma'am, sir?
Did you turn in a speaker form for this item or for the visitors' and citizens forum?
For the visitors' and citizens forum.
Okay, do we have that?
And your name is?
Tier.
You have it as ethics guidelines, 8B, you don't have it for the two, for the visitors' forum.
Okay, excuse me, my mistake. So does that mean I'll have an opportunity to speak at a later point?
On 8B.
Okay, excuse me, my mistake. Pardon me for interrupting.
All right. Okay. 6A, where are we?
Ordinance number 2021-24, an ordinance adopting the City of Kerrville, Texas subdivision code, a comprehensive rewrite of the city's subdivision regulations, said rewrite to be known as the City of Kerrville, Texas subdivision code, and found within Chapter 82 of the city's Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Okay, this is second reading on this item. Any comments or questions?
I just think it's important that we note that, as we did tonight in the workshop, that we come back in time, which is the plan, to look at this again, make sure that things are as they are, and I don't know that we have, actually have a time limit on that, but I think it's important to know that even though it is, it's an ordinance, and we'll be using it, that things can be changed down the road if it's found that it's not working. So I think it's important that we remember that.
All right, do we, I hear a motion on this matter.
Do you have a follow-up report?
Mr. Barrett? Did have a quick follow-up on the three items.
I'm sorry, I thought there was no staff presentation going.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry, too.
Just a quick follow-up. We did look at the definition of open space based on Mr. Strachey's comments. I don't think there's any conflict in what Mr. Strachey was looking to achieve and the current definition. The street jogs discussion that we talked about is intended to be, to eliminate abrupt lane shifts, so kind of working through our consultants and our surveyors, we'll certainly keep that in mind if there needs to be any tweaking of that, but this time, there were no changes recommended. And regarding the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission vote, the Planning and Zoning Commission vote directly relates to state law and local government code, and the two references to the city council supermajority vote was the direct recommendation of Code Review Committee and Planning and Zoning Commission for those two items.
All right.
So there are no, no changes recommended.
Okay. Any questions?
If I remember correctly, I thought that when we had our workshop on the subdivision code our very first time, we were told that the Code Review Committee was split on the decision of whether to do a supermajority or a simple majority vote on that issue for sidewalks.
For this, for the sidewalk waivers, that's correct, and council's directive was to go to a supermajority.
Okay, so they didn't give a recommendation for the three forms?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 20 dash, 2021-24. I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor? Appraised hands, thank you. Thank you for all the citizens involved in this.
Yes.
Just, that's great service to the city. All right, 6B, Ms. McLean?
Ordinance number 2021-25, second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-14, which created a planned development district on approximate 58.74 acre tract of land out of the Joseph S. Anderson Survey Number 141, Abstract Number 2, and the J.S. Sater Survey Number 142, Abstract Number 290, generally located north of and into the 1,000 to 1,200 block of Thompson Drive, Spur 98. Set amendment to update the previously adopted concept plan and land use table, establishing a penalty and effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
There are no?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Paxton?
Another one with a second reading, just a quick follow-up. They did amend the concept plan, showing those access easements that are on the plot, and updated the land use plan as directed from the last council meeting, going back to retail trade two for those previous lots. And we also included in the backup a list of retail trade two land uses from the previous zoning code to eliminate that necessary cross-reference. It'll be included in this ordinance document. That's it.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2021-25 on the second reading.
A second.
Got a motion second? All in favor by the appraised hand? Okay. Let's go to 7A.
Financial update for month ending August 31, 2021.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just so you know, the next few months are going to look a little bit different as we move through financial reports, because we're coming up on year-end. We'll have some adjustments we'll bring to you, including some year-end numbers and potentially budget amendment coming to you probably in December. So the first, the first slide here, I just want to give you just a little bit of overview of what you're looking at as we go through this presentation, because it does look a little bit different. So current budget refers to the budget after the completion of the mid-year amendment that was approved by council back in May, I believe. It also includes some transfers that were made between line items by departments as they try to clean up their budgets as we move forward with some items that maybe they were over on or under on and those kind of things. With those line item transfers, there's not an impact to the overall budget, it's just moving between line items, just for clarity there. Also, it's important to remember that fiscal year 21 was budgeted lower than fiscal year 20, so that's just something we'll probably keep saying, because as we go into 22, we'll see some variances that we'll point that out. For the general fund, the water fund, and the golf fund, revenues were estimated. I did those as of 9/22. However, there's some accrual processes that we have to do at year-end that can still affect those, so just remember, these are estimated. It's really a best guess, just based on historical data and trends, as we're seeing it so far. Expenses were not estimated for these funds, because we still, as of 8/31, we have an entire month of purchasing that has to take place, and some of those larger purchases are going to include things like paving, which can be higher dollars. So that's why we didn't really feel comfortable doing that at this time. Development services and hotel occupancy tax funds, both revenues and expenses were estimated for those, and other funds will be estimated as we enter the month of October and get things closed up, those smaller funds. Do keep in mind that the year's not over, and so while we do the best we can to give you as up-to-date information as we can, things change daily, and so we're monitoring this all the time. Something that is important as we look at the water fund is to remember that we bill a month behind. So water revenues for October and even the first cycle in November do have an impact on the year-end as we do that accrual process there. So as we talk about estimates and its definition, I want to share this quote, because I will probably say estimation 100 times through this, so it's better to be roughly right than precisely wrong. So we do the best we can every day, and until we close out that year, we just won't know exactly what those numbers look like. Okay, moving into the general fund here. Looking at the big categories, and we look at these every month, property tax, that includes current year, prior year, penalty and interest. So when you see a better-than-budget on property tax, you might wonder, you know, if we were off a little bit on our estimations, but basically, we budget for prior year and penalty and interest, but there's just no way to be able to calculate who has past due taxes that are going to actually pay those. So that's what that accounts for. Looking at sales tax, I love telling you every month that it's great, it's been performing really strong. I hope that continues. Again, it's super subjective, so anything can happen there. So looking at August sales tax for June sales, we were up 17.3%. We did have two pretty big out-of-payment period payments there, so 15%, give or take, is going to be our actual increase. September sales tax, we already have that. It is not in the 8/31 financials, but always try to let you know if we have it. For July sales, up 13% and no strange out-of-period adjustments there, so that's a straight-up percentage, so really strong. Increase is still being driven by retail, food service, manufacturing, and wholesale trades. So same kind of categories, as we talk through those top five sales taxpayers, still accounting for the largest portion of our sales tax, so. Okay, continuing with the general fund, franchise fees, we are looking at a worse-than-budget of $114,000 there. Franchise fees include things like K-Pub, Atmos, and any other fees for other entities that are using city rights away. So those are kind of hard to budget. We do use historical data, but timing is sometimes an issue. COVID, you know, could potentially be an issue with different services that they're providing and revenues that they're generating on their side. On the good news, our other revenue is going to exceed budget, or we estimate that it will, by $128,000, so that should be a wash right there. Examples of this is going to be state emergency management funding, our Kerr County contracts, so EMS, those kind of things. And then also, our KISD Resource Officer reimbursement is included in that as well. This just gives you a little bit different look, and I'm not going to go through every line, but I really was just trying to break this down so that you could see it, how it's going to look as you see it in your budget book by category. So it just gives you a little bit different look at each line on them. I know a lot of times, we bulk things into other to try to get through monthly reports and those kind of things, but as we're getting to year-end, I thought a little more detail might be helpful here. So estimates, you know, like I said, they're, we're being evaluated daily, and we'll continue to change this as the next, really, the next month goes along. So looking at an overview of expenses on the general fund, these are as of 8/31. Did the same kind of thing here, where I gave you categories as you see them, so you can see them in a little bit more detail. We're not estimating expenses at this time, but this does give you a really good look at where we are as of 8/31. Keep in mind that September is a super-heavy purchasing month. We're still in the middle of paving season, so we do have some big dollar expenses coming in. So specifically, looking at the paving line, it looks like we're well ahead of budget, but by the time those other expenses come in, that is going to make a substantial impact on that line. So you could see a pretty big change in this line of expenses here. Okay, on the water fund side, we did make a good effort to estimate, you know, water revenues using historical data and trends that we're seeing, you know, every day as a new cycle of bills come in. However, October bills do have an impact. November 1 actually has a little bit of impact, because we're billing for September consumption. So we'll do a year-end accrual process at the end of the year and be able to give you a more exact number there. I did want to point out that when we budget water revenues, we use a water rate model that's based on an average consumption year, so an average rainfall year, so should be looking at a little bit more consistency when it comes to irrigation and those kind of things, and then we also factor some growth. But remember that we've had lots of conversations about stabilizing water revenues, and so I think this is a pretty good example right here of how rainfall does have an effect on your water revenue, because in July and August of 21, we had four inches more of rainfall than we did in those same months of '20. So if you look at that compared to the way sewer is looking, and that is actually over-budget for almost the same amount, we do use that residential sewer averaging, which makes a very consistent revenue source. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind as we're moving forward in the next several years in looking at water rates. This is kind of the same thing on overview revenues. It's by-line item, again, as you would see it in your budget book. I estimated these as of 9/22, based on what we were seeing with the current bills already being put in for September. Reuse, I think this is really interesting, for 11 months of billing that we've had, we do still have one more cycle to bill for reuse, 211 million gallons of consumption on the reuse side. So that's irrigation water, and we did the math on that, and that accounts for about 3,400 residences each month. So if that was potable water, what would that look like? So just thought that was interesting to point out. Overall, after we look at everything, we're expecting the water fund to be over-budget just a little bit, hopefully, $125,000 if we're right on our calculations. Again, we'll know a little bit more here in a few weeks.
Can you remind me how we estimate and factor in growth for each year?
With my water model, it's about, it's a huge spreadsheet. Basically, we take a look at what consumption was for an average rainfall year. We look at 2019, so if you look at average rainfall years, 2019 was considered as close to the 30-year average as any other year that we've been able to find. So we look at consumption for that year and then factor the growth percentage that we look at when we calculate number of accounts that have grown each year. So each year, that percentage is a little bit different. I think we're at about .75 right now, if I'm not mistaken, but we apply that to the consumption and then apply the rate. So just, it's pretty basic, but it's a lot of data that we pull in on every single, whether it's residential, commercial, municipal, and then at every single billing tier, too. So how many people are using an average gallon of water, how many people are using above-average? So it's just a big formula that we have.
Okay.
So looking at water fund expenses, again, we didn't estimate this. I will let you know that we are seeing a pretty substantial spike in costs relating to chemicals, specifically in regards to shipping. So we don't know how that's going to affect us this year, but we are looking at the impact of that moving forward in next year. Again, when we have, you know, a lot of rainfall, we are using fewer chemicals, we're having less maintenance, things like that, but we just never know, again, what that next, the next six weeks basically is going to provide us with expenses that have come in during the month of September. I also want to let you know that service category includes water, electricity, natural gas, and those things are higher in the last few months, so as you look at services there, that gap's going to close pretty substantially. that gap's going to close pretty substantially. Okay, I'm always happy to bring you good news on the golf fund. It continues to be strong. We haven't estimated expenses over there yet. Revenues, we are expecting to be better-than-budget. You can see that we have spent some money that we needed to spend over there. And we'll be bringing you specifically a budget amendment related to the donation that we received to do some car path improvements and those kind of things. So we'll talk more about that most likely in December as we're wrapping everything up. Again, we didn't estimate expenses here, but just to let you know, the golf course, they had two large tournaments this year. We also had a high school tournament this year, which brought in a lot of people. Schools are practicing again, so we're seeing a lot of movement out there. Also, we have a new software company that we transitioned to at the beginning of '20, I believe. And they have a pretty wide reach on marketing. So they're, they're an app that's used across the nation, really, for people to locate golf courses when they travel. And Bobby says he's seeing a lot of repeat business from those people who are coming in one time by using the app. So good things there. You know, we do think that maybe some of this is related to COVID restrictions and that people are actually getting outside and doing things, but they seem to be coming back. So I think the guys keeping the course in good shape is really having a big effect.
Let me just say, we got a great, we got a great letter from someone who funded some money as a memorial to the golf course and came back and saying, "It worked great, loves what happened." And when I was there at the tournament, I heard a lot of good comments about just how the course is and everything.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of good comments on that, too. I think the overseeding they did in October really helped and clearly helped us with some of the damage that could have been done in February if we hadn't done that. You know, according to the maintenance staff over there, that ryegrass really protected that course. And so we were able to just move forward without having to do a bunch of green replacement and those kind of things. So we're really proud of them over there for what they're doing. Okay, moving to Development Services Fund here. Again, we did go ahead and estimate revenues and expenses because there's, their expenses are pretty set, largely salaries and expenses that we can easily predict. We totally expect them to come in at budget or slightly under on the expense side. We are expecting a net loss. This is primarily to a shortfall in revenues. And we've talked about this a little bit each month. We do have a pretty healthy fund balance there that can easily assume that loss. But timing is a major, major factor when you're, when you're predicting revenues for Development Services Fund because we just don't know when things are going to come in. So again, they do the best they can to project revenues. And, you know, just like anything else, it's really hard when you're doing it, you know, a year out. We do have multiple large development projects that are in the works right now, and we're expecting some of those to hit early 2022. So this could completely look different as we go into next year. Okay, lastly, we'll talk about Hotel Occupancy Tax. Same kind of good news story here. We're estimating a pretty large, better-than-budget revenue projection here, $298,000. We have a few days left, so this is only collected until the end of September. And so once that's up, then we'll be able to say for sure what that's going to look like. Short-term rental revenue continues to grow. We continue to see more and more people signing up, more and more CUPs. It's not that we don't think there was operational revenues, I mean, operational rentals happening already. We just think there's a lot more education out there right now. So we have people that are, that are in compliance now and really doing the right thing. So I think that's really helping. Kerrville being a drive destination, that's a great thing. You know, really good option for people who don't want to fly or due to other travel restrictions. And we just happen to have a community that can support multiple kinds of activities. So we also had more large events that took place this year than we anticipated when we were creating the budget, not knowing what COVID was going to do. So just to let you know about year-end process and what you can expect from this point forward. So 9/30, our fiscal year ends. So just to let you know, finance department, we have a New Year's party on that day. So we're very happy to kick off the new year. 10/1, finance will be, begin our year-end process. We'll continue that through the month of October and a few things actually into November as we move into audit. So our actual fieldwork audit happens 11/15 through 11/19. So that's when the auditors are really looking at everything that has wrapped up at the end of the year. But we do start that process in August. So all of our interim work has already been done on process. So in our department, we find that one thing quickly rolls into another. And so we just keep moving. We'll have the final budget book presented in November at some point when we're able to finalize all year-end numbers and get the presentation wrapped up like we like it. It's looking like December council meeting based on what council chooses to do in November. That will bring the 2021 budget amendment to you. And we'll just wait for council direction regarding transfer of year-end funds. And then February of '22, it's already on council's meeting for that month, that our comprehensive annual financial report will be presented. That is always presented by our audit firm, who this year is BKD, who has been servicing us, I believe, for the last five years. Don't quote me on that, but for a good while. February of '22, we will start our new budget and start this process all over again. Happy to take any questions you might ask.
All right, questions or comments?
Just good presentation, Julia. It's easy to understand.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you because being the first time to go through the budget process for me, I can't even imagine how hard the work has been for you. So thank you.
Thank you.
No questions?
Anybody else, okay? I hear you have a pretty good staff.
Oh, I have a great staff. If it wasn't for them, it just wouldn't get done.
All right, good. Thank you. Thank you. Were any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. 7B, if you'd read that in.
Update from the 2021 Texas Legislative Sessions.
I almost didn't make it down here. Good evening again, council. I'm going to try to make this as, as brief as I can. You know, as you know, the Texas Legislature meets every other year. And it's really kind of, I really enjoy the process. I look forward to the process because it's all about writing laws. And sometimes I look at these laws and I think, boy, I could have written it just a little bit better. And sometimes we give our opinion for that. But in general, they really do a good job. And when the smoke clears, again, it's kind of a neat process. We start looking at this in November, December of the, of the year before the session begins. And then usually, most years, we're looking at it through June. This year, as you may know, they've gone into now three special sessions. In fact, they're in session now. And they're still filing bills that could impact the city. Let me also say that I'm very, very grateful that it's not just me that has to review this, this information. We have professionals on staff that take this, this, these issues very seriously. And, and they put in the time to review on a weekly basis and comment back to me. And if needed, to make our voices known to our representatives or TML. And let me, let me tell you about TML as well, Texas Municipal League. Well, I don't think, I know I couldn't do my job without them. They issue a weekly report that I pour over, and it's very, very helpful in terms of what's going on in Austin. So again, this is just going to be the highlights. These are new laws that impact the city's services or operation. To give you some, in today's nomenclature, analytics, 60, over 6,900 laws were, or bills were filed this past year. 1,000, a little bit over 1,000 were adopted. 249 were city-related, although in terms of impact to the city, we tracked and TML tracked over 2,100. So a lot of volume of bills. And again, let me also say, again, we've got city professionals. And the city manager said something the other day I thought was pretty interesting. The city is involved in essentially 40 different businesses, if you will. And, you know, where we provide services to others. And if you think about that, that's quite a number of businesses that, you know, 300 or so employees handle. And so again, on a, on a weekly basis, some staff are looking at these bills, are looking at the summary of bills and letting us know if we need to weigh in on them in some form or fashion. Also, this year, you all adopted a resolution, in fact, the first resolution of the year back in January of the legislative program. And it really, you know, set us up where we could wave that around, if you will. And we talked, you all talked about, you know, kind of protecting the city's interests as a home rules city, that we are very wary of preemption, that is, state coming in and telling us how and when and why to do certain services. And then, of course, unfunded mandates and which, you know, are impacted and the finance people have to figure out new funding for. So that was a great help for us as a staff to know kind of, you know, what you all were interested in and kind of a blueprint on, on how to both do our involvement for last year, but in coming years. I also want to say that Senator Buckingham's office and Representative Murrow's office, I think, speaking for them, appreciated having something like that because they knew your interests as well. And it gave us a chance to then follow up with letters or emails to them saying, hey, remember our legislative program? We're, we have an issue with this bill for, for whatever reason. And I think they're appreciative of that. And let me also say that their local office was a great help because they would either reach out to us and ask us, hey, do you all have an interest in this bill that's coming up? Or they would give us a heads up, hey, this bill has been filed. You all may want to weigh in. But I want to sing their praises as well. And I, and I think under that resolution, under the authority of the resolution, I think we sent roughly about 10 letters that the mayor signed to the various, to either the senator's office or the representative's office or even a committee. And so that was very helpful. So again, here's some, very quickly, bills that impacted the city. You know, this, this first bill that I have here, House Bill 988, appraisals, let me say a little bit about that, too. There are a whole hand, a host of bills that impacted the appraisal district and their process or what is taxable property. I didn't include any of those here. This is the only appraisal bill that I will bring to your attention. It is now a Class A misdemeanor for, for a city official, you, staff or otherwise, to communicate with the chief appraiser to influence appraised value of property. And you think about that, and, and, you know, I, I don't think anyone's doing that, of course. But then I remember there was a situation where I called the appraisal district just to find out some information on a property that we were dealing with a code enforcement issue on. And I wanted them to know that this was not a homestead. No one was living there. And I think that could have perhaps violated this law. So we're just going to have to be very, very careful and mindful of this law.
Wow.
HB 1869 is, applies to debt financing and certificates of obligation. It basically modifies the definition of debt for debt service property tax rate calculation. But it explicitly includes infrastructure, and it defines that as streets, bridges, sidewalks, parks, utilities and public safety facilities. And so it really kind of goes along the lines of what certainly the city of Kerrville has been, is part of our practice over the years in terms of funding infrastructure. HB 103, actor shooter alert system. You wish that they didn't have to address these issues, but they have made it a requirement that DPS create a alert system for these types of situations. HB 1927 is the constitutional carry bill. I think everyone knows about that. That has made it where you can carry a handgun and not be, not, not be required to be licensed to do so. HB, HB's 1419 and 2677 apply to missing persons. I think this is obviously pretty good. Police now must report, you know, under certain conditions, the names of missing persons to the Alzheimer's Association. And, you know, the more we get out that information, the obviously the better. As you can imagine, this was a session that dealt with police and their operations. And so they have required additional police training. And so when they do that, that impacts the city's budget. SB 69, use of force. There is now a duty to intervene for police officers if they see something happening, even in the way they're responding to a situation. And in general, there's a ban on chokeholds. There's exceptions for that, you know, if they're in danger of bodily harm to themselves or loss of life. But in general, there is a ban on chokeholds. HB 929, body worn cameras. They are required to record during active investigations. And I've, you know, I, I have to look at these videos on occasion. I've never, this has never been an issue here in Kerrville, but apparently it has been an issue in other places. And so now it's the law that you've got to keep your camera rolling. SB 1056, false reports. It does tighten the law on that. And I think that's good because occasionally we do have false reports made to our 911. SB 2212, along the same lines, duty to render an request aid. It actually creates a duty to do that, to stop and aid someone. HB 738, the building codes. The state has actually adopted the 2012 International Residential Code. You may recall in the last year, council adopted the 2018. So we're in full, full compliance with that bill. HB 1475 applies to our Board of Adjustment, which is part of the zoning process at times. It provides a definition of unnecessary hardship. So that'll be part of the zoning amendments that we'll bring back to you. And we'll explain that in additional detail at that time. HB 2444, that applies to channel, excuse me, Chapter 380 agreements, which we have. We have one with Kildare. We have one with the Arcadia, I believe. It basically requires cities to report those agreements to the comm controller. I don't think that'll be too much of a burden, but we'll need to certainly do that. And we have a few months to, to do that. SB 291, commercial construction. This is interesting. And this goes along the lines with something Drew was talking about, about signage at development. You now are required to post a sign with contact information for construction projects. And that's, the onus on, under this bill is on the developer. And I don't, I didn't read the history of why that bill was introduced or adopted, but I, I assume it was something along the lines of, in case there's an issue, safety, you know, who to call in case something happens on the site. SB 1090, building materials. The session before this, they really constrained what cities could do with respect to building materials. And basically, if the building code allowed some sort of building material to be installed, we couldn't prevent that. And this really didn't apply or had any sort of impact on the city of Kerrville. But these dark sky cities that were requiring businesses to install certain light fixtures, the, the previous bill had wiped that out. So Representative Mur was instrumental in getting this bill adopted. And he basically made an exception for light fixtures so that these cities could maintain their dark sky lighting status. And, and there was some water conservation component to that as well. As you know, we've been dealing with a pandemic for the past 18 or so months. SB 6 has to do with the pandemic liability. And first responders are not liable for injury or death where it's, where it was reasonable really that the pandemic was the cause. So that gives some additional protection in the law to our first responders. I think you'll recognize that that is a good bill. SB 8, sorry, SB 968, disaster preparedness. This is also good. And this stems obviously from the weather event in February. It now requires wellness checks on medically fragile individuals and requires cities that operate utilities to have some redundancy in their power generation, was, which is exactly why in the last month, staff came to you and requested some additional funding for that. SB 244 applies to TERS. The board is now subject to the Open Meetings Act. I'll note that under our charter, the TERS was subject to the Open Meetings Act. And we've always complied with the Open Meetings Act with, with respect to those meetings. HB 624, offenses against public servants. This increases the penalties. You know, that's in relation to some incidents that have had, that have occurred over the last year. HB 1118, cybersecurity requires training for employees who use computers. And so while this is perhaps an unfunded mandate, it is, you know, you read about this, these incidences in the news virtually every day with respect to hackers and, you know, requests for money and, and things of that nature. So it is a good, it's, it provides some good training. And we've, I think staff's gone through that the last few years. And it's just, just a great reminder. And it's just a great reminder about, you know, emails and what you're opening on the internet as well. HB 1925 is Camping in Public. That makes that a Class C misdemeanor. That obviously stems from some things happening in Austin. And doesn't really apply to us, but it'll go, you know, and go to KPD to enforce that. SB 617, Farmers Markets. I throw that in there to give you an example of a bill that you don't really know why it's in there, but it did. And so there's obviously some sort of incident in another city, and this is preemption, right? This is, if you're dealing with a farmer's market and you're a city, you have to give them a one-year permit, no less, and it's got, your fee can only be $100. Why that's there, I don't know, but it was adopted, and we'll have to comply with that. HB 786, CPR Training Is Required Now for Dispatch. HB 27, 2073 Paid Quarantine Leave. You'll hear about a policy that we need to adopt in relation to that, but that gives some additional leave to our first responders. SB 22 is Disease Presumption, and this gives some additional workers' comp protection and presumptions to our first responders as well. SB 1359, Mental Health Leave Policy. This is applicable to the police department. As you can imagine, this is a great bill. You know, we're starting to take more and more time to think about first responders and the mental health, you know, issues that they go through. And so this is, I think we'd all agree, a good bill to have. SB 3, Utility Preparedness, Statewide Alerts, that, you know, again, resulted from the February weather event. SB 952, Concrete Batch Plants. It adds to the TCEQ permit process and what's required. And I really just throw that in there to tell you that it seems like every year, they make the regulations of concrete plants and quarries just a little bit more stringent. I don't think it's reached a level that it certainly placates neighbors yet, but they do take a look at it every, every session. SB 13, Contracts, and SB 19, Contracts. This, again, is where the state gets involved and says, okay, cities, you can't deal with, you can't contract with people that boycott energy companies or boycott firearm or the ammo industry. I'm not aware of anyone we've ever dealt with would even think about doing that, but nonetheless, that's now in the law. And so we'll have to really, you know, probably ask the question and do some, some research on whether the people that we're dealing with fall into that, those issues. So with all that being said, I know I went as quick as I could. I would say that if you, I issued a report, 50 or so pages to staff, and we're still working through that as to what we need to do, both from an internal perspective or from a staff perspective and a council perspective. But if you have any questions over any of these bills or any others, please reach out to me, and we can work through that.
Okay, all right. And counsel?
No, thank you for the report. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't know about everybody else, but, and I appreciate, Councilmember Hughes, I think you're the one who supported this bill going past, and the rest of council voted. So I appreciate that. As you can see, I think it's beneficial for not only council, but the general public to see as one of those items that we're up there, we're actually going to be dealing with in a couple items later. So, but I appreciate that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. And we come to 8A, no, I'm sorry, 7C.
Cities Ongoing Preparedness in Response to COVID-19 Coronavirus and Declaration of Local State of Disaster Due to a Public Health Emergency. Review of Declaration of Local State of Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency.
Chief?
Fair and counsel. Thank you. Have some good news to report tonight, so I'll give you a brief update on where we're at. So although the active cases currently, and I'll show the trend in a second, show the 266 is being high. As I mentioned in the past council meetings, I believe these active numbers are low according to DSHS, that they do lag behind for some of the trends we've seen with the school district, trying to marry up with the state on that. So 266, as you'll see here in a second, looks higher, but I believe this is on the deceleration phase. 115 deaths are reported, and the good news is 16 hospitalized. That is the lowest since mid-July, and that takes a tremendous amount of pressure off the hospital system here in our community. So that is a very, a good number to see, and I know they're very glad to see that, too. If you'll remember, we were close to 46 at one point at the beginning of September. So as I said, the COVID cases here, reporting the numbers per DSHS. So you can see, it looks like it's climbing, but the trends we're seeing regionally state are that these trends are coming down in the deceleration phase. And so if you look at the bottom line, that's the hospitalization. And so you can see where we were at 40, and we were at 46 in there, but down to 16. So how that trend is coming down is more important when we really look at the, at the pandemic and the impact of the healthcare system. So local update, so this is, we've had a little bit of changes in regards to the vaccination percentages. So overall, so 48.6% of eligible residents are fully vaccinated, and now the state average is 61.3. So we're consistently still behind the average state for the state of Texas. So those 65-plus, so we're 63.7%, are fully vaccinated, and once again, still below the state average of 78.9%. Vaccinations by age, we are seeing a little bit of a change there. And so for the 12 to 15-year-olds, so they're at 564 out of 2,300, that's up 6% from the last time I reported to you all, the last council meeting. The age group 16 to 65, so they're 43%, that's up 3% from the last time I reported. And then the 65-plus, so they are at 9,410, up just 1%, but a lot of the 65-plus receive that vaccination early.
What is considered a fully vaccinated individual?
Two doses, or two doses of the Pfizer, the Moderna, or one dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Okay. Thank you.
Switch. There we go. Meetings and Collaboration. So Community Leadership Meeting, we met on Thursday, September 16th, and we have our next meeting scheduled on Monday, October 11th. The last meeting, remember that, involves city, county, Peterson Health, Kerrville Independent School Districts, so the Kerrville Economic Development, Kerrville Business Bureau, K-Pub. So we really get together. This is a great, a great way for us to not just community leadership for the COVID, but this would actually play into other opportunities for emergency management for other disasters also. So our next meeting's on the 11th, and we will have a community update on that Monday, October 11th also. So vaccine updates, a little bit of a change since the last time. So Pfizer is still under the full FDA approval. That hasn't changed for 16-year-olds and older. So, but the Emergency Youth Authorization, so now the FDA recommended to the CDC to approve under the Emergency Youth Authorization, one booster shot for those 65 and older or 18 with underlying medical conditions, at least six months after you're complete with the second dose for that. That is only for the Pfizer. So they're still working through the other approval process for the Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So that is a change for that. Other individuals who are included under the CDC are those 18 and older who work in high-risk settings or live in a high-risk settings. So some of those that work, first responders, educational, the postal service, grocery store workers are recommended for the booster. Vaccine and Testing Availability, so this remains the same. So nothing has changed since the last report out to council. HEB number one and number two are still offering the vaccine for Pfizer and Moderna. So the at-home tests are still available for the Quick View or the By Next Now. Walgreens is still providing the Pfizer only that they have, and they do have specific hours for that. Walmart still is providing the Pfizer, so they did have the Moderna available only for those that needed to get the second dose, that they received the first one through Walmart, and they can receive the second one there. Testing that they have available, once again, they have the at-home test, the By Next Now. Then CVS, the vaccine that they still had is the Moderna, so they're still providing that on specific days. And they do testing at their pharmacy. You just have to register online. Peterson Urgent Care, the vaccine is, actually, I take that back, vaccine is available but for specific times, so I missed that update. So it is for specific times during the day. You can get that on the Peterson website. So, and they will actually tell you when they do provide the vaccine on those hours. Testings are still, the walk-ins welcome. The Frankin Clinic hasn't changed either, no vaccine, but they do provide the testing. So if you schedule online for an appointment. So COVID-19 still continues to be a public health threat, although we're in the deceleration phase, which is real good news, definitely with a, with a less of an impact on the hospital system. I continue to encourage the flu vaccine, so there was a community vaccine clinic a couple weeks ago, so it is readily available at your local pharmacies. Peterson Regional Medical Center, so they also updated their frequently asked questions on there. So you have information on news and information, general COVID-19 questions, vaccination questions, symptoms and testing, when to return to work or school, and other good links to DSHS, the CDC, and the FDA. Then, of course, the Department of State Health Services still provides a lot of information regarding the vaccines, so data dashboard. Want to get more information about the county, so you can find a lot of information on the vaccine and the active cases for it. And with that, any questions or comments?
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McElhaney?
Paid Quarantine Leave Policy for Firefighters, Peace Officers, Emergency Communications Personnel, and Emergency Medical Technicians to become part of the City of Kerrville Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual.
Kim, Ms. Meismer?
Yes, sir. Okay, we do have a presentation, and I put it at your desks, or at your tables before the meeting. And like Mike said, this is part of Texas House Bill 2073. It was passed by the 87th Legislature, signed on June 15th, 2021 by Texas Governor Greg Abbott. It is effective, this bill was effective immediately, and so it is retroactive for us to June 15th, 2021. So who is eligible for this? Firefighters, emergency medical technicians, police officers and marshals, emergency communications personnel. Those are the ones that dispatchers or answer 911 calls. What are these employees eligible for? Paid leave for those who are ordered to quarantine or isolate due to possible or known exposure to a communicable disease while on duty, and the key words are "while on duty." Sometimes that might be difficult to determine, but most of the time, we've, we've actually gone through the police and fire employees and have been able to determine who is, who actually contracted the COVID while on duty. So this policy will become part of our City of Kerrville Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Pursuit to the charter, the city manager has authority to adopt personnel policies without council action, but council approval is needed for this policy due to potential budget impact. So staff recommends approval of the paid quarantine leave policy for firefighters, peace officers, emergency communications personnel, and emergency medical technicians to become part of the City of Kerrville Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, questions?
When it dates back to June?
Yes.
Are you now going back and compensating any city employee that contracted COVID while at work during the June, July, August, September timeframe?
So what we're going to do is we're going to go back, and what they, any employee who had to take off was taking their sick leave, and that's what it was charged to. We have a COVID sick leave tag now, and we will go back and reinstate their sick leave.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are we limiting it to the people here, or are we doing that as a city policy?
First responders only.
Yeah. You know, I was just going to say, when the state mandates it, and you don't want to vote against fire, police, EMS.
Not too much.
Anyway, do we have a motion on this?
I will move that we approve the paid quarantine leave policy for firefighters, peace officers, emergency communications personnel, and emergency medical technicians to become part of the City of Kerrville Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion second? All in favor, it would be done by the raised hands. Okay? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Come now to the consideration of the city council ethics policy. Are there any recommended changes?
I'll start off by providing a little bit of information. So this was an agenda item that I requested with a councilmember's support. This agenda item was originally supposed to be, I accidentally said December, we changed it to September, so that's going to come before us today. We did have some discussion during our workshop regarding some of the sections in the ethics policy. I wanted to wait till the regular meeting to do it. So unless council has any other comments on anything else or changes.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
One thing I would like to look at and get some clarification, and hope we're on the same page as looking at Page 3, Section J, is Conflicts of Interest and Disclosure. This situation has come up before and with prior councils as well. This conflict of interest is also guided by state law, and our city charter provides that no council member can abstain from voting unless they have a conflict of interest, as defined by law. The law, and this ethics policy has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 provisions from state law that tells when there are conflicts of interest and when a council member can abstain from voting in that case. The very first section, of course, a council member is required to give a disclosure of their conflict of interest by law. And once they do so, Section 1, J1, says, "Once disclosure is made, the city official shall leave the meeting to ensure their presence does not hinder the discussion of the item or influence the vote." I want to clarify something, though, that happened at the last meeting.
Is this a discussion, or you're talking about ethics policy?
Yep.
So I just want to make it clear, I don't know that what you're about to say relates to this, any problems or issues you may have with the policy, because we're talking about the policy. Do you have the way that policy is written? Do you find anything objectionable within that policy?
Well, with all due respect, if you don't mind letting me finish, unless you can't...
No, I did let you pause, and I wanted to ask you a question before you went on.
Yeah, it's about the policy.
Is there a clarification to the policy that you'd like to recommend?
Yeah, let's, let's let Mr. Garcia finish.
Thank you. I would like to clarify something. I did reference the ethics policy at our last city council meeting. I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding. It could have been on my part as well. What was taken into account is the, in the situation, the, there was a council member who claimed that a conflict of interest, not defined by law, but just a personal conflict of interest, that they want to excuse themselves from voting. That individual stayed at the meeting. They did not vote, though. In the ethics policy, it says that they need to leave the meeting. I was not telling that individual, that council member, that they needed to leave the meeting, because I understood that they did not have a conflict of interest as defined by law. Instead, I was ensuring that that council member did vote, as it's required by our ethics policy and our city charter. So just want to clarify that. But to get clarification on this from our city attorney, and so we're all on the same page, if a council member has a conflict of interest, disclosing it is with an affidavit, and it has to be by law, and then they have to leave the meeting as required by our ethics policy. Is that correct?
Okay, well, one, you're asking me for legal advice. I represent all of council, so if all of council wants me to answer, I'll be happy to do that.
I don't. I feel like we've got procedures in place.
I'm, I'm fine with what we have in here, and unless... I'm, I'm fine with what we have in here, and unless going forward, you had an objection with it, I think that's what we're here for, is to look at going forward.
Yeah, I have no objection with the way that it is now. But just to ensure that we abide by that section.
So I think you've noted that, and I think that's fine. I think we're good.
Okay. Any other, anything else on the ethics policy?
Mayor, we do have citizen speakers signed up for this item.
Sorry, what?
We do have citizen speakers signed up for this item.
Okay, all right. And let's, let's hear from the speakers.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my apologies, Raymond Tier, 546 Sand Bend. My apologies for interrupting earlier. I admit my ignorance in understanding how all the policies work. What some of you know, but all of you may not know, is I'm an honorably retired pastor in the Presbyterian Church, or in the evangelical Presbyterian Church. So ethical matters are not only of great personal moment for me, but of great professional interest as well. And I was looking at the items that you had posted online, and especially section four, item K, advocacy. City officials shall not utilize the city's name or logo for purposes of endorsing any political candidate or business. City officials shall only represent the official policies or positions of the city council or board to the best of their ability, and such representation may only occur upon receiving the specific approval of city council or board. When representing their individual opinions and positions, city officials shall explicitly state they do not represent their body or the city, nor will they allow any inference that they do. So in looking back at some of the political ads that ran during the last city council election, there's a beautiful family portrait, full color, with a particular family. It's a lovely family portrait. And the ad is signed, Kim Clarkson, City Council, or Curville City Council, Place Two. It ran on Thursday, April 4th, or excuse me, April 22, 2021. That would seem to be a violation of that particular section of the policy. There's another picture of, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're not quite so photogenic as, as the Clarkson family, with the same candidate that ran Thursday, April 29. And it signed Mayor Bill Blackburn. That would seem to be a violation of that particular ethics provision as well. And there's another one that ran the weekend of May 1st and 2nd, 2021, along with some former mayors, and it signed Mayor Bill Blackburn. Those three things in particular would seem to be violations of this particular ethics policy, or this particular provision of the ethics policy. So I would hope that at some point, you would give us an explanation of why this occurred, or at least assure us that it won't happen anymore. These things certainly are rampant in Austin and Washington DC. They do nothing to contribute to the well-being of citizens, and they do absolutely nothing in matter of fact, are deterrent to lean and effective government. We see what happens in Austin and Washington DC. We certainly do not need that in Curville. Thank you.
Thank you.
What provision was that?
What section is that, Mr. Tier?
That would be, that would be in section four, and it's, and it's item, I believe it's item K.
Got you.
Under advocacy.
I agree that there needs to be clarification on that.
Yes, and I have the photos of the ads here, if you'd like to have.
I know what the ad is, but what page are you on again?
Yes.
Page three.
Page three.
Right, okay.
Item K.
Yes, it's, it's page three. It's section four, item K, under advocacy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Nikki Caines, 1809 Mountain Laurel. Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia, for clarifying some, but truly after looking at what was posted, J, letter J, conflicts of interest and disclosure, I went to the statutes.capital.texas.gov, and I actually read through it. And although section 171.002 does cover substantial interest in personal, in property, or actually say, in a business, the definition of substantial interest was 10%. In section 171.004, it uses the same language. And it does continue on that a member who does have that shall abstain from further participation. But if you go down to letter B, it said, the affidavit must be filed with the official record keeper of the government entity. Who is that? I mean, if we're the public, is it of public record, and can we find out who that is? And then letter C, just underneath that, the full reading says, if a local public official is required to file and does file an affidavit under this because of the, what do you call it, the substantial interest, it says that member is not required to abstain if the majority of the other members have also filed and have the same interest. That is confusing to me, especially when you go down to section 553.002. It actually says that the public servant who has a legal or equitable interest, the wording has changed, and I would like to know why substantial interest is a 10%. And now here, it's legal or equitable interest in a property that is to be acquired with public funds, then they shall file an affidavit within 10 days before the date on which the property is to be acquired. I, I can't see how you can, I mean, if, if there is a member who might have a conflicting interest, how you're going to be able to abstain from any discussion, file the affidavit with who knows who, except that further down on this one, it does say that the affidavit must be filed with the county clerk where they reside, as well as the, the county for which the property is, you know, where, where it is. So I'm still, in my mind, maybe I'm just a little slow, but if, if section 553 actually clarifies section 171, or chapters 171 and 172, there seems to be somewhat of a conflict as to how you're going to be able to do your jobs, honestly, to avoid.
City attorney, can you answer?
Yes, please.
Answer that.
Okay. You know, these are all intended just to give some idea to council members as to the conflict of interests that are out there in state statutes. You all, as public servants, have sworn an oath to abide by these. In my, in my 20 years, I've never had an issue, anything close to what you've suggested. Have I had council members abstain? Absolutely. Probably happens once or twice a year, very, very rarely. I'll admit, these, these laws are hard to read, they're hard to discern at times what, you know, what the requirements are, but you've got to go through them very slowly. Again, these are just there to, to make you aware that if, if you believe you have a conflict of interest, and we all know what a conflict of interest is, right, in personal property, or a business, or real estate, or something like that, then, then you, you file the affidavit, and you file it with the city secretary, and you leave the meeting. But again, I, you, you said a lot there.
I know, I'm sorry.
And you got into the, you got into the statutes that I don't have before me, but I, I don't think it's, it's really, you, you look at these, sometimes you think it's a complicated issue, but I, I don't think it is. We just have to work through it. And in my opinion, council is very aware of the, of the properties they own and businesses they're involved with, and there's really never really an issue.
Well, as part of the citizenry, how would we, I know, I understand, under 553, we would go to the county because they have to file with the county clerk. Did you just say that they would file with the city secretary here as well?
Under, under chapter 171, they would.
Okay, and would that, again, be public knowledge for any of us who wanted to look into it?
She's, she's got a file on there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Clarkson, I was asked if you could bring your microphone up a bit.
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, what?
I was asked if Councilmember Clarkson could bring her microphone up a bit.
Okay, all right.
Bethany Pucci-O?
Bethany Pucci-O, 418 Crest Ridge Drive. I just have a couple real short things here. Under 4C, I don't know if you have the ethics in front of you, it's civility, and just, just a quick, and I had already mentioned this at last council meeting, but just when Ms. Eichner had said can't fix stupid, it seems like that would have fallen outside of that, and I'm not sure if she was referring to just me or everyone that signed the petition. I'm not sure who that was in reference to, but that, that doesn't seem to maintain courtesy, civility, and collegiality, as it says in here. And then the, the next one is just 4E, and I won't read the whole thing, but city officials shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, and then skipping ahead, otherwise interfere with the orderly conduct of meetings, all of which is in accordance with the city, the council's applicable meeting rules and procedures. So I've just noticed that sometimes in meeting, it does seem like things are tense, and there's some interruptions going on, and I would say that that's probably not in keeping with the ethics agreement either. And then the, the last one would be the 4K advocacy, and I know that Mr. Tier already talked about that, but the other thing that I had thought when I read through this is that the mayor, and then Ms. Eichner and Ms. Hughes had all written articles or columns, letters to the editors during the petition, and I don't recall, I remember that, I believe that they were signed mayor, or, but there wasn't that in the end here, where it says, when presenting, when presenting their individual opinions and positions, city officials will explicitly state they do not represent their body or the city, nor will they allow any inference that they do. So I just, I don't recall that being said in any of the articles, columns, or letters to the editor, and I think that that would be in keeping with the advocacy of this 4K, that anytime that anything is published in writing, that there would be that disclaimer in the beginning, that it is a personal opinion, and it's not a representation of council or the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay.
No, Peggy's waving off.
Yes.
No, yeah. Okay, she's waving off. Okay, do we have any other speakers?
Bruce Strakey, 615 Earl Garrett. I'm reminded of the mid 2000s, and the way the council and the citizenry interacted back then, and I'm really disappointed. I thought we had gotten past that. I thought that with David Wampler and Todd Parton, and some other folks that have been on council, and I probably should stay away from individual names, that we've encouraged people for civility and, and for working together. And especially since the last election, it's been very interesting to me that there seems to be, instead of speak softly and carry a big stick, it's, it's weighed the stick. And so I just, since we're talking about things that we're criticizing the council for in public, and when, for the last example of doing a position paper in the, in the paper, perhaps it should say, I'm speaking for myself. I think that's really, when we're looking in the paper and we're reading an opinion piece from someone, we know that that's coming from that person and not a statement from the city. But if we want to get that picky, and that technical, and that petty, that's okay. We can deal with that. I wonder how many people know that, and when we talk about advocacy, that there was a city councillor that was actually sending out press releases with the city logo on it, representing that it was an official thing from the city. Mr. Garcia, would you like to address that?
Yeah, yes, sir, I will.
So, you know, if we're going to start throwing spears at people, if that's how we want to run the city, if that's how we want the public to come and address this council, if we want to create a fight, then I guess that's what we've got. But that's really disappointing to me, because I find, in my personal life, and in my professional life, and in my civic life, that when I find a way to work with people, to find a constructive path forward, I had a very positive conversation with councillor Garcia yesterday afternoon. I think it went very well. I don't know what it's going to end up with, but it was positive, it was constructed, we had really good questions. I wasn't accused of anything, I didn't accuse him of anything. It was very good. I think it was a really good conversation. I'm looking forward to the next one I have with Mr. Garcia. I don't understand why we have come here to attack. We're attacking councillor to councillor, we're attacking citizens to council, we're attacking citizens to staff. We have the most professional staff we've had in this city since I moved here in 2006. It's a really good staff. It's taken years of council and city managers working together to build up what we've got here. This is a beautiful thing. I would hate to have us throw it away. I don't come here as a Pollyanna weekly to talk about how great Curville is. I come here because this is a great place, and I don't understand why we are fighting about things. We have our opinions, we have difference of opinion. You all have been hired for free, 25 bucks, I guess it is, to lead us as best you can in the public interest, and I believe every one of you come here and do that every two weeks, or every second and fourth Tuesday. Let's work together. Let's find the way forward to make this an even better place, because this is a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
That's the end of our speaker, sir.
Okay, all right. Council, is there a motion on the?
Well, Mayor, I may address the question that he had. So Mr. Strakey was alluding to a press release that I submitted and sent out regarding, well, it was in early August. He alluded to the fact that I included the city logo, and that's true. What respectfully, he failed to note, though, and what he stated is that somebody could have seen that as I was, or it was like I was representing the entire city. Respectfully, what he failed to state is that I included, at the bottom of my statement, that the opinions and positions expressed are solely my own and do not represent those of the city, the city council, or any city official. So with all due respect, I did. I quickly went and contacted our city attorney and requested legal advice on this. I even heavily researched, and I looked at our city charter, our ethics policy, our procedure rules, and nothing in there states that any council member cannot use the city's seal for purposes like this. However, after conversations with our city attorney, I did went ahead and sent out another press release. I hadn't even submitted on my social media like I did later on when I changed, and I removed the city's logo, and I included my own. So I did do that. I quickly remedied the situation, but still realized that there's nothing in our procedures that I, or ethics policy that I violated, because nothing in there states that I can't use it. And in fact, I did include that statement at the very end. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion on this matter?
If we're not making changes, correct?
No.
So we really, we don't need a motion for anything, correct?
Ms. Taylor, do we need a motion?
No.
If it's not going to be changed.
We're not making changes.
Okay. All right, let's move on to 8C. Ms. McElhanan?
Amendments to procedural rules for meetings, Curville City. Sorry, two of those.
Counsel, I guess, I think my name is on the agenda bill. I just went into your.
I just went into your meeting rules and made the two changes that you all talked about in early, I believe, early August, maybe in late July, that's what's before you now, that draft.
And I would also like to include the discussion of removing item 3.1C from our council rules and procedures. I think that those are becoming confusing at best and not necessary. I think when we want to put items on for future agendas, we do that here at a council meeting with full transparency in front of a open meeting and not behind the scenes. So I would like to remove that art, that item from this as well, 3.1C.
And making a comment on that, I don't know whether this stems from it or not, and so please correct me if I'm wrong, but a comment was made that she was going to request to remove this section, because I ended up, after council decided to have the ethics policy reviewed in December, I accidentally said December when I meant September. And so I went back, remedied the situation so we could have it on our September meeting. Before, city council members were allowed to put something on the agenda without anybody, without any request from another, or support from another council member. That was allowed in order to give each council member an opportunity to present what they wanted to, to represent their constituents. Over the years and with current, some current existing council members, that rule has been changed, so now you need the support of another council member to include the item on the agenda. And this is whenever you're doing it outside of a meeting. There's a process to do it outside of a meeting. Now it seems unfortunately, that a member on council wants to make it so that any council member cannot include an item on the agenda outside of a meeting.
So, uh...
Well, excuse me, I'm...
Okay.
This, thank you.
Hold on.
This continued restriction and removing the ability for council members to add items onto the agenda outside of a regular meeting, it's restricting the ability of council members to also effectively represent their constituents. You're limiting the voice of them as well. Granted, we can do it at a public meeting. I would like to make a note that one of the next, one of the next items that we're going to be considering on our agenda, I submitted to the city manager and city secretary requesting a council support. I hadn't been able, I hadn't had the, all the information from TML in order to do it at a regular city council meeting. I was waiting on information from them. I received that information, and once I did, I submitted my request to the two of them, and they went out and submitted an email to the rest of council. Councilmember Clarkson, well, you can start my five-minute timer if you'd like. Councilmember Clarkson agreed to sponsor my item because it was a time-sensitive matter, she said. So now you're restricting us and you're avoiding what we could, what we just did, what we were able to accomplish there, together, and I don't know how you want to say, in a bipartisan manner, and now you're going to try and say...
We're not a partisan council.
Well, I know, that's why I'm saying, okay, well, together, collectively, supporting each other. We were able to do that, which was good, I think, and now you're trying to remove that section, and it's further removing the ability of council members to add items to the agenda.
Okay, Ms. Clarkson?
Yes, thank you. I would actually like to address the council, because this is a council discussion item. And I respectfully decided that I wanted to bring this forward, because I voted in a public meeting for an item that then was changed behind the scenes without my input. And in the time that I've been on council, I think if we're talking about ethics and transparency, then us having conversations at meeting is very ethical and transparent. And putting items on future agendas in other ways to circumvent conversation in the public in front of our constituents, and to just get items on because we don't know if other people will support them or not and go behind the scenes, I don't agree with. I think that if we're talking about ethics and responsibility to our constituents, then what we need to do needs to be done in the public and not behind the scenes. And when we want items on agendas, we have a means for doing that, and that's through items for future agendas.
All right, okay. Let me ask this. We had time in the workshop Saturday to talk about the ethics policy. One of the advantages the workshop has, you may not know this, but items that are on the agenda, we can only talk to one other person on the council about that before it comes up. That's to preclude a, you know, getting a, you know, getting three people who can then vote the same way in advance of the meeting. But we haven't really had the time in a workshop to go back over this very carefully, and I think that would be best for us to do that. In light of that, I would like to make a motion that we table this and discuss it in a workshop, future workshop.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor with the upraised hand? Fails. All right, then let's have at it. Who else wants to dig in on policies and procedures?
I have a couple of suggestions. We discussed these at our original workshop when we reviewed this. Starting on page six, I don't know if this is the same one, starting on page six, section 5.1A, page six, section 5.1A. Requiring a speaker to, and you can start my five-minute timer if you'd like, requiring a speaker to register in advance of the, of the item coming up. This is something that I spoke about before I was on council, while I was on council, and during our workshop as well. This item, and there is a law change in the state law that allows each person, any person in the public, to attend a meeting and speak. Before, you didn't have the right to speak, now you do. And the spirit, I think, is what we need to look at of that law, was that no governing body can prohibit an individual from speaking. However, they did put a section that you're allowed to set reasonable rules upon when people come up, and I guess those are, for example, filling out a speaker request form. Requiring somebody to register in advance, if somebody were to leave to go to the restroom, there is a mother who has to tend to her children and then come to the meeting a little late, and we're on the item, we haven't moved on from it, they should still have the opportunity to submit their speaker request form to speak on that item as long as we're still on it. That is, that's something that I would like to, considering removing. Moving on to, I'm sorry, going back to page five, section 4.6, looking at referencing a document. It says, "Where a council member plans to reference or cite a document that was not included as part of the agenda packet, the council member should make copies for each council member and provide the document to the entire council as soon as possible and prior to the meeting." One of the recommendations that was from the, some other council members, was to change that to, "Each council member shall make copies and provide that to each council member before the meeting." What I think we need to probably further define is what does reference or cite a document mean? Because you can come and I can say, you know, in state law, it says this, is that referencing a document? I don't think so. That's, I'm not referencing a certain document, I'm referencing something, a code, something else. So I think we need to define what referencing is. There have been several situations in our council meetings where an individual has said, "Well, you're referencing to a document." You can't speak on that, when really the other individual wasn't referencing to it. I also got to look at the fact that it says, "Where a council member plans to reference a document." So maybe we need to add clarification too, because if a council member just thought of it now and has the document with him or her, they never planned for that to happen. And if you're saying that, well, how do we know you did? Well, it's against our ethics policy to even infer upon those kind of things. So those are a couple of things that we need to clear up. And the last one is on section, or page seven, section 5.2. We discussed this at our regular, our workshop, and I thought we came to an agreement. 5.2 requires that each person who wishes to speak to council comes to the lectern and states his or her name and address for the record before proceeding with comments. To me, there's a privacy concern with that, and I alluded to that. I'm fine with putting that down on the piece of paper if we need to contact you, if you make a request, if you want information from us, that way we can reach out to you. The concern is, you're now at a meeting, it's being recorded live for anybody to view, put on YouTube for the whole world to view, and you state your address. That's a privacy concern, I would feel. And so I would ask council to relook at that, and I thought we decided that, I agree, I think it's, I think we all can agree it's beneficial to know whether they live within the city or not. And I thought we had decided that instead of having them required to say, require them to say their address, instead require them to say whether they're in the city or not. So, those are, those are the three sections I would ask council to look at and consider, and I can make that in a form of a motion if needed.
Okay.
I really would like to go back to the mayor's suggestion, that we have these in writing before us as to how you would recommend that they read before we, before we vote on it. I, I think a workshop would, would be much better than trying to do it, we don't have it in writing, we don't know exactly what it's going to say. I'm very uncomfortable with voting.
So, just start with the first one, then.
But I'd like to have it in writing. I would like to be able to see it.
Are you making the motion?
Not just here.
Are you making the motion?
Well, we voted down to have a workshop, so I guess what, I guess my motion would be that I would like that we have, changes must be in writing before us, before we, before we vote.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion, second, that all of these changes, whoever offered them would be in writing before we consider it and vote on it. All in favor of that, let it be known by the upraised hands. 4-1, all opposed? Okay.
So then, if council wants it in writing, I'm more than happy to quickly do that. If you want to recess the meeting, I could write that out.
No, that's all right, we'll, we'll do it later. Thank you for your willingness. Okay, 8D?
Appointment of city council committee for municipal court judges' evaluations.
If I can ask for clarification, what happened to the other amendments that were in the procedural rules? Those didn't get adopted yet, did they?
No.
No, they weren't adopted.
No.
Okay. So this is going to come back to us at a workshop, I guess?
Yeah, right.
No, we didn't, we didn't vote.
Because that wasn't in the motion.
But they voted, we voted down the workshop.
We voted down the workshop. We need to have them come back to us in writing.
Yeah, yeah. Bring them back in writing.
Okay.
We'll consider it. Okay, appointment of city council committees? Ms. McElhanan, 8D?
Um...
I'm sorry, did you read that?
Yes, sir.
I'm a little distracted.
That's okay. Appointment of city council committee for municipal court judges' evaluations.
All right, okay. Discussion, and Ms. Eichner, I think you had something to say about that.
Yes, I was involved with this in the past. They, our municipal judges have two-year appointments, and we did this two years ago. It was well-accepted, and we had some good suggestions come out of that. I would like to be a part of that again, simply because of experience and, and having done it, and I would like to, I would like to ask Mayor Blackburn to assist me with that.
All right. Okay. Any comments or questions?
Is there a plan on when you'll come back with recommendations to council?
Their term is by the end, runs out the end of the year, so we would do it within the next month or so. Yes.
The same, probably the same meeting we appoint them to?
I'm sorry.
What, are you thinking, because I know we have an agenda item to appoint the judges later in this year, so would you plan on just coming back at the same time we plan to make the appointments?
Yeah.
Or earlier?
I don't know, Ms. Hayes, what's best on that?
I would leave it up to the committee. I think before or at the time would be absolutely reasonable as an expectation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that as the leader of that committee, you could, you could certainly have that flexibility to tell us when you decide to tell us.
Yeah, do the evaluation reports to council in executive session, and then take a vote. Any clarification?
No, I would just say that I think you should afford the judges the opportunity to get into executive session with council if they want to do that. Now, sometimes they don't, that's not something they need to do or want to do for, for a variety of reasons, but I would evaluate them with enough time to bring them before council if need be, and then have a, a meeting perhaps down the line where you consider the appointment, or reappointment.
Okay, all right. Okay, what is your...
So, I would...
You making a motion?
I would make a motion that I, I and the mayor evaluate the municipal court judges.
Okay. All in favor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the upraised hand? Okay, okay, 8E?
Appointment of city of Curville delegate for the 2021 Texas Municipal League, TML, annual conference business meeting.
Yeah, I want to say that this is very important, and this is, the Texas Municipal League wants us to have a representative, but they're to be voted on. Now, I will tell you, since this is, this will be my last Texas Municipal League meeting, I would like to serve in that capacity as our, as our representative.
Mayor, if I may provide some information, since I submitted this agenda item, part of the primary functions of TML is to advocate on behalf of city, member cities, and of course, the city of Curville is a member city in that case. They do that based upon a legislative program that is developed by those cities, which is then approved and looked at the TML board of directors, and their, and then their advocates go and advocate for or against certain efforts with the Texas Legislature. Of course, a lot of the business that they do can affect the cities, as we've seen in the report that Mr. Hayes gave us. So one way that you can do that is through the annual business meeting, which occurs at the annual TML conference, which is in just next week. And they can, member cities can submit resolutions that they would like to be considered, similar to what we did with our legislative program to, for the senator and representative to consider. So each city is asked to provide one delegate to serve as a liaison member, and those individuals will represent us and be given the opportunity to attend the business meeting and vote on the resolutions. So because the city of Curville is a member city of TML, giving us the right to select a delegate to attend and participate in the meeting, and based on the importance of forming a legislative program, I asked for this to be on the agenda, and I thank Councilmember Clarkson for supporting this to be on the agenda. And so to ensure that the city is, not properly, I'm sorry, and to ensure the city is represented at the business meeting, I recommend that we appoint one of the members to serve as a delegate. I've done a lot of research on this, and I understand the, the process. I spoke with the TML representatives during my conference with them, and then I had some separate correspondence and conversations with them as well, and I'm very familiar with the process in this. And I too would be willing to serve and would like the opportunity unless anybody else is familiar and understands the, the role there. I know the meeting date, understand where they're going to be meeting, the time, the voting process, and the process for registering the delegates, and all of that information.
If I may add, and I appreciate your willingness, Mr. Garcia, I think this is a position that would, we would benefit more by having someone who has been in and involved in our legis, our own personal city government, and I think the experience that the mayor has would be very beneficial to us. And I, I think I would like to make a motion that, that we appoint the mayor to do that, and there will be a time in the future when you've had more experience that you, you could do that then.
All right, wait, does that motion have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, all in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, and it is unanimous, thank you. Okay, 8F?
Kayla Guidelines, and, I'm sorry, appointment us to the Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy. Kayla.
Good evening again. At the last meeting, y'all appointed the... At the last meeting, y'all appointed the members to the Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy, and there were five applications at that time. You asked us to go back and advertise and try to see if we could get some more applicants. We did that. We did a press release and a Facebook post, and we were able to get two more applicants, Joseph Bereki and Anna McCoy, and we would like to have those two additional people appointed to the Kayla.
Just curious, is there a reason we didn't get a copy of their application?
You should have gotten a copy of the application.
In our agenda packet?
Yes.
There's a copy. No, there, it was sent in the email.
In the email? It was in the email?
Oh, okay. My bad, I must have missed it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, Joseph Bereki is with Tybee High School, and Anna McCoy is, she was previously at Our Lady of the Hills and is currently homeschooled.
Okay.
I move to appoint the two applicants to serve on the Curville Youth Area Leadership Academy.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Let it be known by the raised hand? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Passes. Okay, board appointments?
Appointment to the Senior Services Advisory Committee.
And we have three reappointments, as we mentioned earlier, so I would make a motion that we appoint Waverly Jones, reappoint Waverly Jones, Sandra Yarborough, and Teresa Standage.
I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion, a second? All in favor? Let it be known by the raised hands?
And then we also, we would need to thank the other two that have, have put in their applications and see if we can encourage them to apply the next time we have availability.
Main Street Advisory Board, would you read that in?
Appointment to the Main Street Advisory Board.
Okay. Council discussion. We have four who are staying on, and they're eligible to come on, and then one vacancy. All right. Do we have a motion?
Wait, I'm sorry, Mayor, did you say four that we can reappoint? I think there are only three.
We've got, there are five slides that could be reappointed, but one of those is vacant.
Right. So there's, there's four eligible...
Eligible for reappointment.
Mm-hmm. One has not submitted for reappointment. No, right. Only Clint Morris, Linda Rector, and Melissa Southern filed for reappointment.
Correct.
Correct.
What about Michael Welborn?
He did not put in an application.
He did not. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so those three names, do we have a motion on that?
And I will say, council, just before you take a motion, we did get a notice today from Ann Overby that she will be resigning her post effective November 1st, but she did, there was an application that was also submitted with her resignation, and she did have a recommendation, at least to council, certainly that's always your purview on how to make those appointments, but she has a remainder of her term left, and so we'll be forwarding that on to council.
Okay.
We got it late this afternoon.
All right. Okay. Do we have a motion, a second? Go ahead.
I'd like to look at the, I don't know if y'all have, so we have, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it like, Lonza Teague and Marvin Willis. So unfortunately, I'm not sure, I met with all the applicants, and I'm not sure those two qualify. I have nothing against them, but the, one of the qualifications is that you must own property or business, or be a business owner within the Main Street boundaries. Marvin Willis, he lives in Ingram, and he has a virtual business, but he doesn't have a location, property, or business located within the boundaries, so I'm not sure that would qualify him, and I would ask for his staff to clarify that, too. And then Lonza Teague, she is the, probably the executive director, I think, for...
Arts and Cultural Center.
Correct. But does not own the business or property within the boundary. So that seems to, those two individuals would unfortunately be disqualified.
All right. Okay, so we're voting on Clint Morris, Linda Rector, Melissa Southern?
And Sue.
And we'll, we'll come back to the recommendation of Ann Overby later.
Yes, we can.
What about Sue Schultz?
Mm-hmm. I would recommend to appoint the rest of the other four members, the other four applicants.
I had asked the question about Lonza being appropriate to, to serve on the board. Mike, can you give us any direction on that, or?
I don't, I don't have the board requirements in front of me.
Do you want to see my copy?
I mean, I, I trust what Mr. Garcia is saying. If they've got to be a business owner, I don't, I don't, I know what her role is at CAC, but I'm not sure if she's a business owner, owns property in the downtown area.
I will say that that same element, I think, was in place. There have been other appointments that have been made, and it's something that, that also weren't business owners or property owners necessarily. I think there were maybe perhaps some exceptions that were made for folks that were in high-level leadership roles within organizations that were downtown, similar to Arcadia and Ann Overby serving. And so it does something that council would like us to look at going forward as an ordinance revision to help clarify that. Certainly, we found those perspectives of some of those institutional downtown folks very valuable.
Yes.
Yeah, one thing I was going to recommend is if we could either have the business owner or the property owner, they can say they have, they can designate one of their high-level executive directors or whoever it's going to be.
Well, I think that's the position that Lonza is in.
Right.
That the KACC has, has recommended.
Right. And that's why I'm saying adding that to our qualifications so that we could appoint people like that.
Okay. Then we'll get some, we'll get some clarification from staff. Okay?
Yeah, if that's the desire of council, we can look at bringing that modification back to you as part of the ordinance. Our recommendation would be to at least move forward with the folks that are out of the current ordinance today so that we can have at least a quorum if correct.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll move to appoint, reappoint Clint Morris, reappoint Linda Rector, appoint Sue Schultz, and reappoint Melissa Southern.
I'll second that.
Wait, okay. I am, the document I have, I'm not seeing Schultz.
It's on the front here.
Oh, it's on...
It's on the agenda bill itself, sir.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Gotcha. Okay. All right. All, and do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
I second.
Let it be known by the raised hand? We need to move through this quickly because our crowd is thinning out real bad. Okay. Appointment, okay, Ms. McAlhannon?
Appointment to the tax increment reinvestment zone, number one, Board of Directors. And this appointment is eligible for executive session if you wish to speak of it.
Ms. Hoppe, should we go into executive session, or?
There are three spots open, and there are three folks that have put in for reapplication. You guys certainly have the option to. You know, I think it would be staff's recommendation to move forward if that's the desire of the council.
I'll move, I'll move that we, that we reappoint Fred Gamble, Catherine Howard, and Bruce Strachey.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Just one thing. While we're looking at qualifications, I would like council to look at the qualifications of the TERES Board. They could, they have to be at least 18 years of age and a resident of Kirk County, or a resident of an adjacent county, or just own property in Kirk County, or own property in an adjacent county. So with that qualification, really, an adjacent county, for example, Bear County, if they were, if any person would be a resident...
Don't interrupt.
Well, any other adjacent county, thank you, Mayor, any other adjacent county, even if they're not adjacent, they could be a resident of that county and still be appointed to serve on this TERES Board affecting the TERES zone, and Councilmember Hughes, you're pretty familiar with that, as you're within that zone. So I would just look at making the qualifications maybe similar to what the Main Street Advisory Board is, is that they have to either own a property or a business within that. I think that's in keeping with the individuals who are within the zone also operate the TERES Board. So just to...
Yeah. Mike, you might want to clarify, but I think this is pertinent to state law.
I think there's state law constraints to this, but we'll get you a follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, Bear County's not adjacent to us, but, okay. We've got three names that want to be reappointed. Any questions on the TERES Board?
I think we have a motion and a second, so...
All in favor of that motion? Let it be known by the raised hand? And then ZBA?
Appointment to the zoning Board of Adjustment, and this appointment is also eligible for executive session if you wish to go into it.
All right. Any issues?
No, I'm prepared to speak on this. We've got three applicants, and we've got three positions. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Bill Morgan, Michael Colleen, and Sam Legion or Legan, reappoint, or appoint them to this board.
I'll second. Can I get clarification on which one? Is Michael Colleen still going to be the alternate?
It says he's eligible...
He's, he can't be moved as a regular member, but I just want to know if that was your intent.
Yes, no, I want to move him to regular.
Okay. And then, Sam or Bill will be, which one would you want all's alternate?
Well, it would have to be...
Sam's already a regular, right?
Huh?
Sam's already in a regular position?
Yes, Sam is in a regular position. Michael is the alternate, so he'll move up, and we'll put Bill in the alternate position, and then he can move up when the next person leaves.
Sure. I'll second that.
All right, go to motion, second. All in favor? Let it be known by the raised hands? I tell you, passes unanimously. Okay. Do we have items for future agendas?
We don't need to mention, the procedural will automatically be on a, a future, right? Mike, are you...
The procedural rules?
Yes.
Would you all want that?
For a workshop.
Yeah, I've got three items that I took note of. One was the item for procedural rules. One were potential revisions to the Main Street Advisory Board, and then we'll research the TERES item and get the, that back out, too, and make sure that that synced up with state law.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause? All right. Meeting is adjourned.